Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us and welcome to the Fort Meade City Town Hall meeting. As you'll notice that we don't have any of the elected officials here. This is just for the community to come share their concerns, let us know what ideas or thoughts or anything that they have want to express regarding the city. I think everyone knows, first of all, excuse me, let me back up a little bit, let me introduce myself. I am Greg King. I am the Administrative Assistant in the Office of the City Manager at the City of Fort Meade, Florida. I was born right here on South French Avenue. I think most people know that, so a native Fort Meadean. And so, everyone knows that the city is going in a more positive direction, we think. More expressive, we want to have more input from the residents, give you more opportunity to hear from us outside of City Hall. And we're gonna be doing a lot more things, different types of activities also, but this is the start of it. And we wanted everyone, because we, I feel bad, you know, I've been in government for a while, and as working as a public servant, I feel really bad when the residents think that their best outlet or only outlet sometimes is social media and Facebook to, especially Facebook, to express their concerns about their city government. But that's not the way it should be. You really should be able to connect with your city staff. We serve you. We're at your service. So if you call us and say you don't like something, we have to at least share a concern or at least try to give you an explanation of why it is that way. We can't explain all of our decisions because, you know, we're a small staff and got a lot of work to do, but we do try to give you an amount of time that we can. I mean, if anyone knows, if, you know, we have, I will tell you, added more structure to the city process, and that's so we can be more productive. Not that we are trying to hide from the residents or we have any, you know, we don't want to connect with you. It's just that we, our time is very precious. We have, you know, a few of us are handful of staff, you know, we only have, I think, ten or twelve people in City Hall, and we have a lot of ground to catch up on. We want to move Fort Meade into its next great generation. So with that said, part of what we have chosen to do is a series of town hall meetings. We wanted to start with the staff since, you know, we'll address especially a lot of the sort of customer service concerns. We address commissioners here. You know, I've been in environments where a commissioner could have, you know, ten member staff. At Fort Meade, it's just the commissioners. So we don't want to overload them because we need all of their energy and time, you know, to consider the legislation that's before them. So we wanted to connect with you all, give you an opportunity to come in, express, you know, your feelings, as I said. But let me set some ground rules of how we think is the best way to most efficiently, efficiently process a town hall meeting. First of all, we're going to do a presentation. I know we've had some concerns about changes that are being made. And it's just, it happens. I mean, it's not like changes at Fort Meade every time a city or government does anything, it can raise concerns. So we understand that, so we want to address some of those, like the fire assessment fee. I don't think anyone's had really a chance outside of the commission meetings to see our wonderful new interim city manager at work. But he's a brilliant young man. We're happy to have him at Fort Meade, even if it's for the interim, if it's for the long term, even the veteran. But right now, he's, you know, he's pulling fifty, sixty hour work weeks, so he's really committed. So that part of it is, we'll hear a short address from the staff, but this is your meeting. So after that address, what we're going to do, and to best show you that we're concerned about your time and efficiency, we'll give everyone index cards. And you can write or not, you know, any questions that you have, any concerns that you can have, you can write on the index cards. Please be respectful, and we will read those concerns and address them in the best way we can. If we can't address them here, we'll get right back to you. We have no problem with that. Dustin loves writing memos. He's a memo machine. So, but it's good because he does give a lot of information. And so I appreciate that. He's thorough. He studies. He asks questions, which is, you know, a sign of humility and a great leader. So, and I enjoy working with him. I hope he enjoys working with me. But, but we work together, and that's most important. So with that said, we're gonna have Mr. Benjamin Speight, who's a community leader in his own right, former commissioner, come up and meet us in an invocation, and then we will afterwards, we'll bring interim city manager Dustin Burke and Chief Matt Zahara, the two main guys who are gonna be speaking tonight, up on stage, and we'll move along with the program. Mr. Speight?
Does this mic work?
It does.
Good evening, everybody. Wendell, you know that if you'd been on time, you'd be doing this. God bless and bless my brother. Bow with me, please. Gracious Lord, accept our thanks for the opportunity that we have to come together as citizens of this great city to talk about our city, to listen to our leaders, to give them our thoughts, and most of all, we need to be praying for them. Lord, at this time, I know that all of us have people in our families or our communities that probably need prayer. I think of two that I've been praying for religiously for some time now, and you know who they are. I ask you, Lord, to listen to each and every person here as they send those names to you. That's such an important thing for us to be doing. Lord, keep us all safe. Bless our children. Be sure they get a good education. Help them to get along with others, to think about those that are less fortunate than they, and to smile, to be nice, and play by the rules. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speight. We appreciate that. Now, the next gentleman that's coming to the stage is someone who I met, I'm like, who is this young man speaking so intelligently and clearly about city government? It's like he's meat in a smarter version. But in any event, I don't know if anyone knows anything about his past, but he's very learned, very studied, and I'm honored to work with him at the City of Fort Meade, interim city manager Dustin Burke.
Thank you, Greg. I really don't know how to follow that introduction. He's set a big, high bar, so I'll do what I can. But I want to first say thank you to all of you for coming. I want to say, my wife and I are just grateful for the warm welcome that we've received from the community, your texts and calls and messages on Facebook, and just, I've been heartwarming and very supportive. So, thank you. I think this is a, I also think this is a great turnout, so thanks for taking up your time and to come here. Like Greg said, we wanted to give an opportunity for the residents to come and ask questions, ask questions directly of the administration. What direction is the city going? What's working well? We want to hear back from you and what we could do better. You'll see here tonight that we've got some things that are new. We've got cameras and we're streaming live on YouTube. For those that are watching, thank you. Please give us your feedback after this meeting. Let us know, again, what we did well and what we could be doing better. We do have, we called this meeting because, you know, there's some big changes with fire. There's changes with the fire assessment. There's a lot of information that's circulating online. Some of it's correct, some of it's incorrect, some of it's not complete. So hopefully that we can fill, we can fill that gap here tonight. Before I, we welcome Chiefs Zahara to the stage. I just want to say, we are making some changes at City Hall. We are, we're changing the culture, and we're bringing accountability and we're bringing, we're giving the staff autonomy to serve the residents better. There's, it's a different city. It's a different city already. And we're seeing a lot of good things from staff. We're seeing a lot of good things from staff. And we're gonna continue to see changes in the way that staff interacts with you, with the way that the city engages with you. So this is, I'm gonna be a learning curve for the city. This is gonna be a learning curve for the staff, so we pray for your patience as we tweak it and try to get it better and better as we go on. So with that, Chiefs Zahara, come on up and we'll talk about what you've been doing with fire. And guys, please give a hand to Chiefs Zahara. He's done a really great job here. Do you want any question and answers? Sorry, this is part of us learning how to do this, great. So, question and answers, or you want to just give it a high level?
I don't mind. I'd take a couple quick minutes and give a high level kind of overview and open it up for any questions you all may ask.
Sure. Thanks.
Again, I was born and raised here in the city of Fort Meade. If you do not know me, my name is Matt Zahara. I actually grew up in a little house right back here, right behind the station. I've told this story before, and I can get long-winded, as I've been told, so I promise you I won't do that unless it is in response to one of you all's questions. But I used to follow the fire truck around town on my bicycle, like a lot of kids do, and that's just kind of where my, where my passion started. I did end up serving my whole career and retiring from the city of Winter Haven as a long dedicated member of that fire department, learning from some great individuals, not only there but throughout the state and country. But the whole time I lived here, my wife and I have chose to raise our kids here. So as we go through questions, some of you all that have followed me or have heard me speak before at some commission meetings, at times I get emotional. I mean, it's more to me than just the fire service. So what I mean, I do mean what I say when I give all of myself to you all. I promise you, so much so, probably ad nauseam to some of my firefighters and fellow officers. I may drive them nuts and crazy sometimes, but that's just a little bit about me. Some of the things, again, the quick overview of what we have been doing. Again, when I left the fire department, I never intended to be back in the fire department. I never planned on stepping foot inside of a fire station. Certain people, there may have been rumors out there. Our serving volunteer chief at the time was actually the one that approached me and asked me, hey, could you please come back and kind of help us do that? At the time, that was Chief Nelson. He's currently been hired as one of our full-time, first in the history of Fort Meade, full-time firefighters, and we're thankful and grateful to have him. But at the time when he came in, they knew something was going on. And going on, I mean, just a change of times. As things have gotten harder, the way we deliver service to the citizens has just, had just become challenged. So much so, that if any of you all are intimate with the situation, know that the commission at the, the seated commission at the time reached out and hired a third-party neutral contractor to come in and do an evaluation of the fire department. So basically, as I've come in, we've started addressing those personnel issues, addressed training issues, data reporting. Some of those things that just basically needed to be updated. They were, they were doing well. What we, what was in place that worked thirty years ago just wasn't quite working. We just needed to upgrade those and get those kind of updated and running a little more efficiently and smoothly. And again, just trying to provide the absolute best. At the end of the day, whenever you all, any city of Fort Meade resident calls 911, I want a fire truck to be sitting there with extremely well-trained gentlemen and/or ladies that provide a service because, again, like Mr. King said, we work for you all. So with that said, I will be glad to answer any questions that come my way this evening. So thank you again.
Thank you so much, Chief Zahara. Quick note, when you're done with your card, you can raise it up and we'll come and collect it. If you need an ink pen, we have ink pens for you also. Chief Zahara is being modest, and I like that. We're a modest team. There's no egos here. We work for you all. We're here to protect your tax dollars, and so, and that's every one of the team. And that's the culture that interim city manager Dustin Burke has brought up. Gentlemen, if you can have a seat for one second. So what we're going to do, we will get your cards. We'll collect the cards. I'll read the card, and then we'll give Quirrell's Director to whoever to answer appropriately. We'll, you know, we'll let them answer. If we need to get back to you, we'll advise you of that also. Is that okay? All right. So I'll leave this for you two.
Can you hear us with it here?
Yeah, I mean, we can. I don't know if it's picking up on YouTube, but we can. Who has a card? And there's, there's a reason, including time efficiency, that we do ask you to write cards. Because we don't want, and I'll pick up the cards hopefully in groups, so we don't want anyone to feel called out or, you know, signaled with their questions. So feel free, write anything as long as it's respectful. The first question we have, I'm gonna mix them up so we don't know who got what. How about that? I would like to see a change on Dr. Martin Luther King, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Street that used to be Fourth Street. I would like to see beautiful, something beautiful for the community and clearness. As well, more light poles and seat change and having a playground for the kids to have some, somewhere to play, and our softball field back and the basketball court back. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your question. MLK has been a topic of discussion at City Hall. It's been discussed in the community, and it is certainly an area that the city needs to focus its time and resources. We would love to see new businesses coming to MLK. We'd love to see residences come to MLK. And we would like to see more community space in that area, such as playgrounds, centers, basketball courts, gymnasium, what have you. So this is part of our long-term strategy. We are beginning the groundwork for it now to come up with some options. Of course, we'll bring that back to the community for their feedback, but this is certainly part of our discussions. MLK is on our radar, and it is important. So we don't have anything solid to give you today, but it, there are things working, and we'll bring you back some more information when it's, when it's time.
Thank you. When will the city work on the roads on the south side replacing them? They all need it replaced, especially Railroad Avenue.
That's a good question. We're doing a lot of infrastructure projects at this time, and I've heard from residents consistently that the roads on the south side do need some work. What I'd like to do is target the areas that need, that are, that most need immediate action. If we can, if we've got the resources now, we can start moving on that quickly. If not, we can put it into a long-term plan to see how can we improve this area and what's the timeframe for improving that area. So we do have infrastructure projects that we're wanting to do all over the city, and MLK and the south side are certainly part of those plans.
And if I can add, we do have a grant that's coming up regarding roads. The problem, it's not delayed, but one of the things that we are looking at is because we don't think there was a town hall or a public hearing when they chose the roads to improve, so we want to make sure and do an assessment, a quick assessment, nothing to hold anything up, to make sure that we're getting to the roads that need it the most. So that is something we are working on specifically. Thank you. With all of the homes being built in Fort Meade, we are in need of a grocery store. Are there plans for a grocery store soon?
To say there's plans for a grocery store soon is a bit, would be a bit ambitious of a statement. There are talks on how to encourage a grocery store to come to town. That's where we are. What, what do these businesses want to see in our town to bring a store here? If we don't have those things in place, we'll have to put a plan together to put those things in place. So part of that, if I may say, is to have a, I think something that encourages businesses just in general to come to town is to have a full-time fire service. So not only a grocery store wanting to put a million-dollar building, but, you know, small businesses that are gonna put their life savings right here on this street, they want to make sure that there's proper protection in place. So I think one of those things that could encourage a grocery store and other growth is full-time, this is full-time practice.
Thank you. This is a great question. I appreciate it. I mean, we've asked it, but where is the safety policy on responding to public records requests?
That's a great question. Our policy is called Chapter 419, which is the state statute that says what the city has to do. And how we administer that policy is being developed. One thing that I discovered very quickly upon my appointment was that there are not administrative rulebook. And anybody that's dealt with government before, it knows there's administrative rules. And we don't have them all together in one place and organized place. So part of, part of my pet project, something that's really important to me, is to establish this rulebook. So we are in the process of putting these together. Public records requests are on that. We are gonna have to start some rules around public records requests. We have a proposal that, we expect to be there very soon. So we see these rules come out that address public records and other areas of government that are important to itself. Could be parks, could be how the budget is put together. So there's a lot of order that's being established around public records requests and other areas of government.
If I can add also, because I've heard from these teams, very, also, this is very important to us because we do appreciate, and we're willing to train the entire staff at the city of Fort Meade, learn, and discuss about that. Or public records, they can really help information. So that is super, super helpful. I'll tell you, there's going to be with, where it's going to be, and efficiency, Dustin is on top of us. So thank you. That's a great question. It's down to us. We have to follow the law, not all records. So we appreciate that. We need more departments to help here promoting companies.
I agree. Simply say that I, I think that we can bring higher density in certain areas, lower cost rents, lower cost of purchasing. I don't know if there's an appetite in the past to bring higher density to town. I'm not opposed to it. Of course, there needs to be political will behind it. So, but I think higher density, like apartments, will certainly have rental challenges and also could put some downward pressure on prices and housing. So, I agree.
Thank you, Senator. This, they said that there will be sixty-three percent increase in non-vehicle coverage county. How will that affect the city of Fort Meade?
I'm not familiar. I can't lie. I'm on reports and I can see this email in the corner, our news article, I don't know where this source came from. If the cost of service goes up, the cost of service, just being straightforward, the cost of services we pass on to the city. And to the residents. So I don't have anything more to say about that because I don't know, I have anything. So, that's it.
Thank you, Senator. City Manager Burke, it is to say that we will get back to you all about that in a special way, so this is important to you. Why doesn't the fire department have people to raise money? This is a beautiful building. I would rather it be empty.
It is a great question. I was gonna get off easy tonight. All the questions for our members in here and more. So again, we recently, give you a real quick backstory for years of volunteer department, was that actually its home center of energy. It had a five-point C3 setup. It was almost like a subcontractor of the city. It had a 501(c)(3) set up. It was almost like a subcontractor of the city, so to speak. Not really, that's the best example that I can give you. Well, when they had the setup, that allowed them to do fundraisers and boot drives and mini-grids and stuff like that to help raise money. Now, that didn't cover all their operational costs, but it would definitely help offset that. So I'm actually glad that this question came up, because we just so recently, we actually had two really great things happen. And on that subject, so to speak, not necessarily being able to fundraise, it offsets the cost for the citizens. It is, we have re-employed that volunteer firewall setup. So our current base staff and volunteers staff are working great together. They're not two separate departments, but the volunteer members are actually part of that organization, and they follow one of those state branded vitals. So that now allows them to do fundraisers, for example, bingo, boot drives, stuff like that. Now, it won't bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it's definitely enough. Anytime we can announce something like that that reduces the cost, and that we can use those funds to help purchase bunkers here, or pay for radiators, whatever, that's obviously less than we got to put in any of the national fiscal budgets. So that's kind of reducing those costs. And it's huge to a small municipality and a small town like ours. Plus, what I've found over the years, Chief Lewis, who is here tonight, would also agree. Fort Meade and parks are huge. We have stuff like that. People love to go there and help you, even if they don't like playing there. Another real quick, great thing that has taken place is, well, I don't know if I should have announced that, but there have been my first couple of weeks here, co-presidents have approached me about, and they asked apparently to be able to work with traditional Fort Meade Fire Department. And if you don't do much job of fire service, tradition means everything to us. So they approached me and said, hey, could we start an auxiliary? It's a 501(c)(3). It would be called the Fort Meade Fire Department Auxiliary. And they would be the same thing. So they're not necessarily directly affiliated with the city. They're their own entity, but they're also a 501(c)(3). So you may very well see them at some of the downtown events, some stuff like that, some t-shirt, video box, whatever, to help raise money, to donate for that stuff too. So in that, I hope answered your question. Again, great question. Thank you.
Actually, a little bit acronyms, we've got a little bit of a problem. So that's good. Better than fire department, which has its own time in City Hall, just to cheat some. I think I really would have done a lot of this to that. But I mean, I always go, we can appreciate that. I will make, real quick comments. If you just arrived and you have questions, we're doing it by cards. Just raise your hand, bring your card, and you can complete a card with it. We've been out of the past, not having to have this card, this is the past. I direct all the documents. Everyone who's at home watching on YouTube, something, I think it's the internet maybe, but they sound maybe awful way. We do apologize to y'all when you want that. So if you have just arrived, raise your hand. Thank you so much. The next question is Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King, and Sasha. We have four of us.
Best question. And it's important, it's important. It's become clear to me since my appointment and since my time here that there hasn't been a lot of deliberate focus on that area of our community. And like I said earlier, and I'll say it again, it's important, and we know it's important. And we are putting together a plan that can both serve MLK and the community around MLK.
So as I said, and we can testify to this, the city has become more efficient. We've done a one-and-a-half hour town hall meeting in thirty minutes. It's a record. But no, a couple of things are really, what we may do, we've had our questions. I think we have a couple more people who are writing their questions. We are going to do something I would never normally do. We will check with the YouTube. If you're on YouTube, you can understand this in the comments. You can ask a very brief question. I'll read it, and we'll see if we can get a response. Please be respectful. But also, what, we are working on a lot of things at the city. One of those is transparency. If you've been on our website in the last week, we probably have three or four press releases. I don't know if everyone's seen the story from Channel 13, which was awesome about the, and one of our businesses got a lot of promotion, which we love, about the CRA lottery. And so, you know, those are the changes we're making. Interim City Manager does very thorough overviews of issues that people have asked about. So you don't have to ask, you know, and you can ask, I mean, you're free to ask questions, but you don't feel like you have to because you're getting more information. And that's where we're moving towards at City Hall, is making sure that you have the information. And we don't like that people have to come to a city commission meeting where they don't really have time to answer all your questions. And that's the only form that you feel like you have. So I tell you my email address. It's not hard to find at the city. Everybody's just the first name, first initial, last name. It's GKing@CityOfFortMeade.com. Please feel free to call us. Our number's still 285-1100. I know we're working on a couple of big things at the city. One of them is, what are they? I mean, we got, the funny thing about the city right now is we have so many things going on that it's funny, we roll from one to the other. And one of those things is, and the biggest part of that is the transparency, is the public information. Our stories are getting out there. People are noticing. We get calls from outside of Fort Meade saying, hey, we love Fort. We get calls from South Florida, California, New York, responses to what we're doing.
And let me piggyback on that. I mean, transparency is a big thing, but also messaging is a big thing. And controlling the messaging, and getting the right message out, getting the right information out. So something that we've implemented right after my appointment was official messages come from the city manager's office. Public records requests go through the clerk. So there might have been a time in the past where you could just reach out to whomever and ask questions and ask for documents, and that document may have been released into the public domain without the full context around it. So we have tightened up how message is getting, how information is getting out. But that's because we want the right information to get out. A lot of times, things would get into the public domain, and it would cause confusion and misinformation and anger and anxiety. And that's not the way we want the residents to feel. So to get ahead of that, I said, well, the city manager's office needs to control the messaging. So if it's a policy, if something to do with policy or planning for the city, it should come from my office. And you can reach out to my office. I might not call you back, but I will have the right person call you back to get you that information. So transparency is big. One thing that we're doing, I don't think that you've seen in the past, we're writing, we wrote an article in the last week that we put on the city webpage. It was very detailed, or I thought it was very detailed, about the fire assessment fee. Why do we have to go to a full-time fire department? How are we paying for it? How are we justifying these costs? Now, when we do write these articles, we have to balance the need between transparency and brevity. You know, we don't want to overload you with information. And when we don't offer something up, that's not because we're trying to hide it. That's because we just, we want to keep it clear and keep the main bullet points, so you know the main bullet point. So when you're in the community, you can talk about what's important to you. So that's something that's changing. And it's going to be an iterative process, meaning we're going to have to adjust to learn you, and you learn us. So how do you want us to engage with you? What information do you find that's important? And we're going to get that too. So I mean, I've got things that I want to talk about, but it might not be something you want to hear about. So we're going to learn you, and we pray for your patience as you learn us.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have anyone with a completed card that they would like to have read? Also, we do have a lot of complaints. We do control the internet, people at home watching on YouTube. It is not our sound that's the issue. It's the internet that's the issue. So we do apologize. We do apologize, and we ask for your patience. What we will do is, for our next meeting, we'll have portable backup also. But we know, I mean, I don't care where you're going. I had to learn this. Twenty years ago, the internet went out for like ten minutes, and I was working in an office. And I was like, oh my God, the internet is out! And it was like, yeah, it can go off for ten seconds. You'll be all right. So please be patient, and please understand, there's nothing we can do about it. And, but we do appreciate your patience. Hopefully, it catches back up, and we do apologize. Thank you. Anyone else with a card?
I don't have a question, but I would like to make a remark.
Certainly. Okay. If we, give us one second, Mr. State. If we have any more written cards, we'll read those first. And then, when we do something else, I don't know, we'll open the mic up, so you guys can come and speak freely. All right. We're gonna, we're gonna mix these up, so no one will know who asked what. But we'll know when I ask when we're gonna get a Walmart. Does the city have anything in place to support entrepreneurial development?
That's a great question. And I think the CRA can be a really great tool to promote entrepreneurial development. I mean, the CRA is here to eliminate slumming blight and encourage business growth. And I think if we, there's some opportunities within the CRA to encourage entrepreneurship. Beyond that, I am not versed enough to say. However, it's something that, it's a question we can take away. And if you want to reach out and let us know who you are, we'll respond, we'll respond to that question. And if there's enough interest, we'll write about it. So I like, like Mr. King said, I like to write, put out articles, let you keep you informed. So if there's not as much interest in that, we can, we can get you some kind of article or memo or this on that.
I will say this, we have to have the most modest city manager in America. We are actively actually working on entrepreneurial stuff. It's, you know, first of all, and I think if I may, as a manager, we are working in trying to catch up to get an understanding of what's been happening. So, and that, when you said the learning curve, that's a learning curve. And that's what we're working through. And if you know this, I mean, I know we have some people in here in construction. And when you're coming in to do a renovation, you have to assess what you have already on site. Because if you start building on top of some bad building, you know, you get in more trouble. So these are things that we've discussed globally. As we get a full assessment, we'll split them up and then have clear pillars of what, where the city is going. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to watch or attend the State of the City address. But Mayor Petriomacucci was very clear that we are going to have new businesses come to Fort Meade. It's happening. I don't care what anyone says. If I have to build a public, well, I'm not gonna say a name. But if I have to build a supermarket brick by brick, I got an uncle right here. He's not in the construction like he used to be, but he can sure enough yell at me when I'm going wrong. So if we have to build it, big, brick by brick. We make commitments. All of us make commitments. Dustin, the new commission, make commitments coming in. We're going to bring you a grocery store. I'm confident in that. Not even a question. Come back a year later and we haven't worked on it, let me know. That I let you down. We're going to reduce your electric rates. If you come back a year later and we haven't worked on that, let me know, because I let you down. And if anybody knew George Williams, my grandfather, I never knocked him a tail alive. So we are working on those things for you. So don't worry. We'll get to you on that. The question is, are there any findings delegated for the business on the south side? Fundings, I'm sorry, findings. The businesses, not the buildings. Most buildings are not owned by the business owners.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, there's no dedicated funding source from the city at this time to, for incubation or to encourage new businesses or entrepreneurship in the city. To piggyback on what Mr. King just said, yes, we are doing things that are going to encourage business. Just because as we get things in order, as we bring order to the city, and how we engage with you, how we communicate information to you, how we communicate with the commission, how we come up with a strategic plan for how Fort Meade goes forward, those things, I believe, will organically bring business, will organically bring investment, will organically bring entrepreneurs to the city. But to circle back to that, there's not a specific entrepreneur program, but these things are certainly, should attract and bring an environment that attracts business and investment.
Thank you so much, Senior Manager Burke. And we know, because we talk about it all the time, the CRA hasn't been used to its full potential. So that is, we're going, you're going to see a different CRA, a more active, creative CRA in what they do, and a more responsive CRA. And that is their, actually, one of their missions is to create business development. And you'll see that all over. Luckily, the city has a pretty solid CRA zone. So we're going to be all over the place. You're gonna see some stuff, and you're like, man, this is New York! Not New York. It's gonna be different. The sound has gotten better on the, on YouTube, so we thank you all for your patience. We know for some people, it's a little better. We do have an online question, and I know I've been working on the issue with City Manager Burke, but I'll let you answer. Do you mind if I follow up a little bit?
I don't mind at all.
The question is, what are we doing with the city logo? The city logo and the services already rendered by Mr. George Gadsden? Who's a Fort Meade native and a world-renowned artist?
Well, we do have the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee that we're assembling that will look at the logo designs and the concepts that have been put forth by Mr. Gadsden. I did send the commission a memo, because I'm the memo guy, this week about how much we've spent. And I think it was, we've spent about eighteen thousand dollars so far. And the total that we had set aside for that project was about sixty-five thousand. So there's still plenty of money that's been budgeted and set aside to complete the logo project. So what we're doing is we're putting together the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee. And I feel that you'll say the next part better than I would, so.
Not at all. You don't want to talk me to words, but the point is, we're having a Blue Ribbon Committee. Today, we ask that anyone who wanted to serve, do so online. If you go to the homepage, there's a, there's a press release. And when you click on the press release right below it, is a link to an application. Download that, complete it, and there's a button that says submit application. It should email. If it doesn't email, just complete it, save it, and email it back to Melissa Cannon at the city. And that's M Cannon, or me. My email is short of G King, but it's M Cannon at City of Fort Meade. But the important part about that, and we should, they have to get back to the commission by the July meeting. So we will have a logo in July. Now, what the logo is, I don't know. The committee has to meet. If you want to serve in that committee, you do not have to live in Fort Meade, but you should have some type of association and a background in art. If you go and you click on, and this is another thing that we're doing for accountability and transparency, we do ask now that the form is super easy to fill, and it has a drop-down in the middle. And it says, choose who you would like to nominate. So that way, we'll direct it directly to them and say, hey, you know, Ms. Alicia Williams, ask that you nominate her to the Blue Ribbon Committee for a logo and signage. So that is going forward. The only thing we're doing now is focusing, getting a group of art-background people to focus on the logo and do something that we'll be proud of for the next hundred years. So that's where we are with that. Please, if you have not applied, please, it's gonna be, we're gonna be super efficient with your time. The meetings will be run super well, as much as we can. And it won't be a lot of meetings at all. We'll, you know, three or four times per year now in July, get your input, go back to the drawing board, and bring you back something that you're looking for.
And as to sponsorships, we've read the ordinances. We're very informed on what it, how people are sponsored. And I think a lot of times, we expect that you have read it as well. So if you want, would like to be sponsored, you're sponsored by a commissioner. So, and years past, when someone would be appointed to a committee, I believe the rules were that the commission as a whole would vote on who would sit on the committee. This is different. Each commissioner will have so many appointees that they can appoint to the commission, to the committee. So if you have a relationship with the commissioner, or you'd like to have a relationship with the commissioner, and you want to serve, I encourage you to speak to a commissioner about that.
Thank you so much. And also, if you want to serve, just come, just go to City Hall. It opens every day from eight to five. Just say, I want to serve. We'll find a role for you. We promise you, because there's a lot of work to do. What they say, now y'all know, I'm trying to quote a church song. Don't laugh. But the harvest is plentiful, but the labor is our fruit. Amen! So we want to let you know, it's work for everyone, if you want to be involved. But you gotta work well with others. That's all we ask. So this question we have here is... So, uh, this question we have here is, why or who started the suc- the section of a lifetime fire, of a full-time fire department? Why hasn't all the citizens told of this change, making it a full-time fire department? And how will we know who grants, or what grants, when grants are received by the city to help us pay for this huge change?
Okay, so I want to make sure I understand the question. The question is it, uh, was the question, that's the first part.
Let, let me, when, who started the discussion of a full-time fire department? Who started it? Uh, was, why wasn't the citizens told that they were making the change? And how do we know when grants are received by the city to help us pay for this huge change?
So how, who began the discussion? Uh, the, the discussion began when the last commission was sat, and with, and with the previous permanent administration. So that's when the discussion, uh, began. There's been a series of, of discussions, public discussions, about transitioning to a full-time fire department. So it hasn't been something that's been kept in the dark, there's been, you can go back and look at the minutes for the past year. There's been meeting after meeting after meeting. Now, what I will concede is it may, it could have been advertised better. Um, you know, something that I noticed before, that, before I was appointed is, the city can communicate more proactively with the residents. So while, while the city may have done things by the book, by the minimum requirements, we, we put out a public notice, we had a public meeting, the commission decided, um, perhaps there could have been a more, uh, robust, uh, campaign to, uh, alert the citizens, uh, and the residents about this change. And, I, you know, things have, people, new people are in charge now. Uh, so that's why we're having this town hall, that's why we're engaging, uh, more proactively on social media. That's why we're writing articles, that's why we're, we're putting out media releases. So I, I, I can't agree with, that the premise that the residents weren't informed, they were informed by the letter of the law, things were happening at public meetings, commissioners were voting, these things moved forward that, through the, through the proper channels. Um, what I will concede is, the city could have done, probably done a job, a better job of engaging you and getting that information out. Um, the next part of that is, uh, question, so, we answered both parts, can I get some? Yes, yes, okay, there's, okay, I'm just looking globally to see. Uh, the third part is, how, how are we aware of when we receive grants? How is the public aware? Um, right now, they're not really informed of when grants come in or when grants fail. Um, because sometimes they do, sometimes they don't arrive, and sometimes they arrive late, or sometimes they, they, we don't realize the full grant amount that we thought we were gonna get. Um, that's something that's important for me, to be able to get that information to you. Um, and I, and I, I'd hoped we'd be able to give you regular reporting on that sooner than now. Um, but, uh, I haven't been, we haven't been able to get to that. Part of it is to, uh, part, part of this, for me, is we are going through the grants that we have, the grants that we've applied for, where is it in the process, we're putting all that information together. And we do want to provide you regular updates on when grants come in. I mean, it's a huge part of our funding, you should be involved, you should be aware of who's paying what bill for us. Who's paying for these fire trucks, who's paying for the stormwater, who's paying for the streets? Uh, and, and these should be things that we celebrate, okay? Um, and, and we haven't done it good enough, we haven't, we could do a better job of getting you that information. And getting you, um, dependable information, not just, we've got X amount out there. Here's, here's what we have, here's what it is in the pipeline, and here's when we expect to receive it. I mean, that, that's something that I would like to communicate better with you about. Um, to do that, uh, we've gotta build a more robust reporting structure. Um, and we've gotta have, uh, we've gotta improve our training, um, with our staff. So that's an ongoing process. I wish I could tell you, we're gonna have that stuff to you in the next two weeks, I, I, I don't think we will. Um, but it's, it's an ongoing thing where we, um, we can do a better job keeping you informed on the status of grants. So I hope that answers the question.
No, take your time.
Uh, so just a quick follow-up to what City Manager Burke was saying. Uh, and I, and I have big shoulders, I've said this before. I guess theoretically, I was originally the first one to bring this to commission. Uh, now, keep in mind, again, the commission, the CD commission at the time, had already known that, hey, there's some type of discrepancies there, we're having some kind of problem there. Um, so again, they had hired that consultant to come in and provide that report. Um, I, I just want to make it clear, um, for those that may have not followed me or been at those, some of those commission meetings. And, and again, I do, I'll take some of the heat for that. Um, uh, as City Manager Burke stated, I feel like some of that stuff probably could have been advertised a little better. Uh, so maybe we had a bigger turnout, even more people, uh, outside, uh, you know, to give me an earful at some of those commission meetings. Uh, but I do want to make clear that our beloved, great, dedicated volunteer, uh, staff and members, and their families, and people that have served on that fire department, aren't going anywhere. So when we talk about a full-time fire department, uh, in a small municipality like ours, we, the, the state basically breaks us up. And, and this was covered very well, I believe, in, in the city's recent article on the city website, if you had a chance to read that. Um, but the city, or, excuse me, the state of Florida recognizes three types of fire departments. One is an all-volunteer, a hundred percent volunteer fire department. Uh, the other is what they call a combination department, which is exactly that. And then which is, the other, the third would be an all-time, full-time, a hundred percent career, fully-paid fire department. So what we're trying to implement is, we're trying to hire a small amount of full-time staff to help all set and implement the shortfalls that we were seeing, uh, over the years with, not our volunteer personnel and the way they provide it, but just the, the lack of volunteerism. The ones that we have are wonderful and great. Um, just to give you an example, Chief Billy Gunnar, if any of you all knew him, um, loved him dearly. He brought me onto this fire department as an eighteen-year-old young man. At that time, we had twenty-eight members, uh, on the fire department. And unfortunately, volunteerism just isn't what it is. So I did, at least wanted to, to touch base on that and make that clear, that our volunteers aren't going anywhere. We're just having to help subsidize that staffing to make sure that we can still provide a service, uh, you know, a much-needed and, and, and well-thought-out, well-trained service to our citizens.
Let me give you some nerd numbers, uh, because they're important to me, and some, we might have some people that are numbers people in the audience. Since, uh, I wrote a report recently that since nineteen eighty-four, uh, volunteers, the, the number of volunteers in the country is down by two-hundred thousand. We used to have about eight-hundred thousand volunteers in nineteen eighty-four, now we're down to about six-hundred thousand volunteers, uh, nationwide. So there's just not as many volunteers showing up. Um, partly, part of that, and we've, we've touched on this in, in public meetings, this is on, I believe, on the article as well, is that the education requirements for volunteers. It used to be basically a weekend class, that, you know, if someone wanted to volunteer, they could take a weekend class, they'd become a volunteer. Now it's, they gotta do the same training, nearly the same training as a full-time career firefighter, so, which is, what, five-hundred hours?
All total, and everything would be close to that.
Five-hundred hours, so going from a, a weekend, you know, course to five-hundred hours to someone who volunteers, it's just that the barrier to entry is so much higher. At the same time that we've lost two-hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand volunteers in the country, call volume has increased by four times. So we're getting, the, the load on the, the fire departments is quadrupled, while the, uh, support staff, staff has dwindled. So that, that's part of the challenge with the volunteer model as well. Did I say that right? Yep, okay, perfect.
So, so you see what, how many numbers, guy, you see, uh, uh, interim manager Burke Sporthay is the numbers. He, he can rattle them off like no one else, so I appreciate that, thank you for giving us that, uh, that's a great explanation. Uh, do we have any more questions? Okay, and then also let me say something else, I'm so much about service, I wouldn't be up here if I could trick, uh, City Manager Burke into doing more of the talking. But, uh, I want to really thank, we have a couple of staffers from the city of Fort Meade. Uh, if you're rising, we can give them a hand. We have Ms. Kelsey Kitka, who is our, uh, financial assistant, and we have, uh, Assistant Chief Luke Lewis, who's joining us soon. And we have a former city manager in our list, Mr. Fred Gillian. Thank you so much, Jesse Shy, yeah. Now, I, I gotta tell you.
And Jeff, Jeff has accepted a position as well.
Oh, yeah, okay, I didn't know you already started. And Jeff, uh, are one of our newest members of the fire team. We have to have the shyest, uh, y'all can come down there and talk to us, but we're pretty shy. So if somebody comes out, you'll be lucky, but no, we, we'll talk to everyone and share what we know and how we can improve, uh, our community together. Uh, so with that, we have another question. There was a grant announced from DeSantis about a new fire department coming on Broadway and Washington. What happened to that? So many false promises, uh, spoke so much false information out there. Please clarify.
Um, so, again, to make sure that I answered this correctly, and I know we were supposed to mix these up, so I apologize for pointing you out, but to make sure, correct me if I'm, uh, if I had it wrong. So the announcement that the city of Fort Meade had received a grant for money, is that correct? Okay, yes, ma'am, so, um, I can tell you what we currently have. Last fiscal year, so not the current one we're in, the last fiscal year, um, the administration prior to me had requested a certain amount of money from the state legislature and state appropriations. Uh, now, some people get that terminology sometimes mixed up, I've had to learn it myself over the years. In my chief's office, before I was sitting in this seat, that is not necessarily a grant, it's a state appropriation. But they asked for a million and a half dollars, I want to stress, asked. We were awarded seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So half of that ask was awarded last fiscal year. I can tell you that we have five years to spend that money. The way it was originally written was to build a brand-new fire station. Well, if you have priced building and construction materials and labor lately, that would not have touched building a new fire station. Uh, so we looked into, uh, using it to rehab some possible options with our current, uh, fire station. I can tell you, there was a couple of big hurdles there. One was we had to go back to the state legislature, uh, many of Zoom meetings, which I'm becoming very accustomed to, and had to get permission from, directly from the, uh, the governor's office to, to allow us to use that to rehab the station. Now, we have a, that would be a meeting and a discussion for another time, but we have a couple of big hurdles if we were to do that. I can also tell you, this year, I personally, uh, met with, at the time, I'm not sure she's, currently still is, Representative Bell in Senator Albritton's office, and I personally requested a three-million-dollar ask to put with that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Uh, now, we have gotten word, now, it has not been signed yet, so I want to stress that, it has not been signed. I don't earmark it, I have no plans for it yet. Uh, but we have heard that we will possibly, a ninety-five percent chance, again, we have not received it, it has not been signed, so I want to make that clear once again, but that we will be receiving half of our ask, which would be one-point-five. So that would give us a total of two, two million, two-hundred, uh, fifty thousand towards either a new station or rehabbing this one. Now, once we get that word, official word, that's a discussion the city manager and his staff and I will have. Um, I can tell you, for the sake of transparency, before I get, uh, yelled at by Mr. King for going over my possible two minutes, um, that's an inside joke, he likes to get with me about my own minute, but, um, at that point, generally what, how we handle that, that's a, that would obviously be a several-year process. Again, that would be state money, it would not cost the citizens of Fort Meade a dime, necessarily, indirectly it would, obviously. Um, but we would put together committees of stakeholders, citizens, business professionals, city staff, myself, or Chief Lewis, or whoever, saying, hey, we're gonna do whatever with this money that we so choose. I want to have input from the citizens, I want to make it, uh, we talked about CRA, we talked about MLK, um, uh, some of those things. The, the, the sky is the limit for us on where we want to put that fire station and what we want to do with it, so. Uh, I hope that answered your question, did I clarify? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I, I want to just clarify something also. And, and I know a lot of people see the government, uh, operating, and sometimes you don't get to see the inner workings. I've been doing it for thirty years, and government is like a soup. And some people will be modest and say, hey, I'm gonna make chicken noodle soup, and some people will say, I'm gonna make this twelve-hour soup that you can see boiled. So we give the vision, and we try to fit the parts within the vision. So a lot of times you do get a vision, and if someone is honest and transparent and not trying to oversell you, you will get what they're getting. We're not, listen, when we come and announce something, and this was before, Aaron's room, City Manager Burke, and as long as he's here, I know, because I know him to be an honest man and a modest man, and, and some of the things I want to announce, it's like, oh, Brad, we can't do that now because we don't have this commitment or that commitment. And it wouldn't be fair to the public to have you waiting for something that we know is likely not to come. Uh, you know, there were some things done in the past, we're not in the past anymore. Uh, we're moving forward into the future. So you will know that we'll have a vision, and we'll lay that vision out. And the vision won't be specific to a fire station here, the vision will be a most, more prosperous, uh, a happier, a, a better-developed, uh, more responsive Fort Meade. It won't be to a fire station on this corner or that corner. It'd be for better public safety, all right? And that's what we'll, we'll feed into, and I love, uh, both of these gentlemen, because they're serious, they're professionals, they're thorough, and they're honest. They're not gonna give you some pie in the sky idea that likely won't happen, all right? And, and that you can appreciate, they're not playing with your, your public dollars, uh, and they're very serious, very serious, gentlemen. I have to crack a joke at least three times an hour to get them to laugh, I don't even know if they laugh sometimes, but, but I appreciate working with them. So understand that, that government is about a vision, not about a fire station on a corner, all right? Uh, do we have any more questions, any more input? This is your forum, Mr. State, did you want to just come up and speak freely? It's the freestyle hour. Yes, sir.
There was a comment made earlier about Mark Luther King Boulevard. I've made several times over the years, I, I have several friends who've been commissioners, and, uh, a city by definition provides goods and services to the people that live in that city. And I've told those city commissioners, uh, you know, we have streets, we have fire protection, we have police protection, uh, we have electricity, we have water, we have sewer, uh, there may be other services we provide. Every square inch of this city should look equal to every other square inch of this city. Everybody should have the same water pressure, everybody should have the same quality of road, the same police protection, the same fire protection. The lights ought to be just as bright, there ought to be just as much electric current running to one house as any other. And, and so, when the, when whoever it is makes decisions, they, they need to find out where is it lacking? Where is it not up to status with everybody else? And that's where it gets done at, and that's just my opinion. Thank you.
And, and that's the epitome of a community leader, to make sure that everyone shares in, in prosperity. Uh, and, uh, I will say this, uh, we get, we've got to mention that they will start on the street skates for, uh, Broadway and MLK very soon. Uh, we, we are talking about that. Uh, there's a few, uh, you know, uh, back-office things that we have to get taken care of, and you'll see improvements in those areas, uh, very soon. Uh, so, thank you so much, Mr. State, for sharing that. Uh, do we have any more comments, any more questions? And feel free, we're a monk family. So everybody in Fort Meade is related, somehow, so. So, uh, we're one big family, but is that it? I mean, uh, calling a commissioner, maybe that's something I, I see, a vision, a prophesy.
That's not the Lord's word for me. No, I, there's a lot I could say, but, um, I get picked at for being long-winded about topics that I'm passionate about. I, I will go back to, uh, part of the vision is, part of it, we have to be disciplined. Your, your cities, your city administration and staff have to be disciplined. And this is not, uh, an indictment on how staff has been in the past, it's just, it's really an indictment on how they were empowered, or not empowered, to, um, to really own the process, uh, of serving the residents. And, uh, so we are bringing a culture of discipline, and that will help, uh, allow us to have a, a foundation from which we can springboard a vision that serves all of the residents.
Thank, thank you so much, uh, City Manager. I will tell you, when I was a kid, I was a huge Miami Dolphins fan, and church used to end at about two-thirty or three o'clock every Sunday. But when you saw the pastor winding down about twelve forty-five, and I thought I could catch the beginning of a Miami Dolphins game, I got a little excited. So I think we've gone over everything that, uh, we have addressed. Anyone have any other questions or concerns that they want to share? Uh, I think we've gone over everything, uh, if you, hey, didn't get something, or you want to follow up, give us an email. Again, we're at your service, City Hall hasn't moved in a hundred years. Uh, I would let, um, uh, City Manager Burke, uh, Chief Sahar, would you want to share anything else?
Not necessarily anything specific, uh, just as we wrap up again. Uh, I believe Mr. King was about to finalize and say what I'm about to say as well, but, uh, I know it's been, if you've been in commission meetings, or, or even here tonight, obviously, whether you're watching on YouTube, um, or some of the past Zoom stuff. whether you're watching on YouTube or some of the past Zoom stuff, you've heard me saying, I just want to echo what they've said. My office is always open. It is not just a saying. I believe we say this amongst ourselves and city staff and city hall. I try to stay out of city hall. But when we're over there, it really is about you. And that, I know it sounds so cliche, but it's really not. I have dedicated my whole life since I was 18 years old. I just, I really fell in love with the fire service and firemen in general, police officers, people that are willing to serve others and put themselves above themselves. And I really believe that goes to city staff as well. Some of these, some of these people, Mr. Burke, in a way, I feel I probably have a public who said this, but is a little lucky in some ways, in some ways not, coming in. He really does have some great staff. He has some great directors in some of his, well, all of his directors in all of his positions are probably the most intelligent people that I've ever worked with. And that's not knocking any of the great, smart firefighters that I love dearly. So again, it sounds cliche, but it really is about you. My office is open. I know the city manager said that. Sergeant Foulter, who is here tonight, may throw something at me afterwards. But I've heard him express before, obviously, his office is open as well. So at least directly about public safety. Please come see me. Anybody that's ever dealt with me or any of my guys can tell you, I have big, open ears. I promise you I will listen. I will give you an answer. It may take me a day or so. I'm humble enough to tell you if I need to look it up, but I'll gladly do that. So please come by. The doors are always open. If you've noticed a difference lately, the doors are open. Please come see me. If you just want to come bring me a cup of coffee, or I'll take you to get a cup of coffee, that's fine as well.
Thank you so much. And that was what I was going to say, but you're a much better speaker. But I want to leave everyone with this before I hand it over to Interim City Manager Burke. This is a work in progress. We are not afraid of criticism. We enjoy it actually, because it makes us better. This is our first YouTube town hall. We didn't expect it to be perfect. We did our best to make it as best as it could be. If you have any constructive feedback, please share with us. We are not sensitive people, and we enjoy it. And each thing we do, each meeting, each town hall, each agenda that we create is going to be better than the last. We commit that to you. And after Interim City Manager Burke, thanks you all for coming. We'll have a closeout by Minister Wenda Williams, senior. Thank you.
Thank you to all, all of you for being here. Thank you for your questions. Thank you for engaging in this discussion. Thank you for being willing to bring your questions and your comments. Thank you for reaching out. We do read what you write on social media. We take that back to heart and because we want, sometimes it's frustrating. Sometimes we read and we're like, oh, man, we could have done better at that. Or, oh, we need to reinforce that idea. So we only get better when we hear back from you. And there's some spiritual principles, some biblical principles that help me get through it. I mean, if you study the life of Elijah, you will see how he was frustrated from one place to another until he was where he was supposed to be. So I take this idea that we are frustrated to be, to get to where we are supposed to be. So please give us your feedback. We're going to, our initial reaction might be, oh, but we're like, no, let's really consider this and let's make this a better place to live. So thank you. Thank you for coming. Thanks for giving it your time and for being here.
Thank you so very much. I did my best just to sit there and not say anything. But inasmuch as you've called me to say a final word, let me just share this with you. Of course, I live in Barito, and Fort Meade is home for me. And believe you me, there's no place like home. And I just want to applaud this interim city manager and the staff for what you guys have done and for what you are doing. Of course, I do live in Barito, somewhat larger city, somewhat larger administration. But what you guys are doing are awesome. One thing that I notice about a leader, leadership is about action, it's not about position. And a good leader is a good listener. And he's a person that, or she's a person that recognized that she doesn't know it all, or he doesn't know it all. And he's willing to reach out and get the right answers for the community. Fire chief likewise. I want to know that I see you from 10 miles away. When I'm in town, I watch, I listen. And of course, we've invested back in our hometown because we want it to be the best city that it can be. Okay? So thank you, thank you, Greg. Thank you, but no thank you. But again, to all of you, I just pray that God will keep you, keep your families, and God will continue to bless our city for it to be the city that we would all like for it to be. Because it's not about black, it's not about white, it's about us. And we are all of us. We are God's people. God loves us. God loves you, and he loves me. And thank you all for coming. Have a good evening. God bless you.